Mr. Mayor.
Present.
Councilmember Helen Zing Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Naomi McGilley.
Present.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Present.
And Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a floor.
I'll call it the first item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have one item on today's work session that's an update on the city's new zoning ordinance. This is informational and it's being presented by Mr. Lee Walton, AICP, from Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated. As a note, I believe we have passed around a document at his request. Mr. Walton.
Thank you. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Very glad to be here this evening representing our team, who I will introduce, as we are in the very early stage, starting stage, of preparing a revision, rewrite, of the city's zoning ordinance. And I think thus far I had the pleasure to meet all of you and so glad to be before you again in a public meeting. So, purpose tonight, several purposes. One, to formally begin the process of zoning rewrite. We've had some preliminary meetings and listening sessions associated with us coming on board contractually. This is the first public hearing, public discussion about the zoning ordinance rewrite, and so we're happy to have the opportunity to start that process, which will be very heavy on public involvement, and we'll discuss that later. There with me Inga Kennedy, president of PEQ Incorporated. Again, I'm Lee Walton, I'm the project manager for Wood Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated. Anna Johnson, my associate with Wood. And a fourth key project member intended to be here tonight, but is home with a son with flu, and that's Paige Hattley. And so, as we work through the process, you will be seeing the four of us consistently. Just a little bit of background, I've been involved in planning and zoning in metro Atlanta and Georgia and the southeast for the past 20 years. I've also been a South Fulton resident for the past 20 years, so I've got a strong familiarity with this area and with the communities and the history of development here. A few years more than the experience and South Fulton experience is Ms. Kennedy, who also, we are actually neighbors living very close to here, and Ms. Kennedy has deep experience with the history of zoning in Fulton County and of the community and its leaders and stakeholders, and she will be heading up our public outreach and involvement process, and she'll talk a few bit more about that as we go on through here. And then Ms. Johnson actually joined our firm a year ago, but she has Georgia roots and experience with city and community planning and as does Ms. Hattley. We are, as I said, very excited to be here. We have worked on similar efforts in recent years for communities like Newton and Duluth, preparing zoning ordinance rewrites, and this is simply something that has to be done every now and again. There are needs that we've understood, there are issues to be addressed, we're getting more familiar with those. But the tendency of zoning ordinances is to become like magnets, and you have something attached, something else attached, and it grows, and after a while you don't recognize it anymore because so many things have been added on to it year after year as issues are addressed with individual changes or ordinances or modifications. So at some point you have to go and give it a comprehensive review, reevaluation, and rewrite to bring it up to speed and to make sure that it's accurately addressing the circumstances at hand. And that's especially the case here where the city of South Fulton is recently organized, and the zoning ordinance that is in place at this time is what has been inherited, for lack of a better term, from Fulton County, and is that circumstance of the ordinance that's been added on to and modified and tweaked over the years. So recognizing that, organizing this discussion tonight in really three simple parts, the scope of what we are undertaking to explain and make sure that that's clear and glad to answer any questions with the process that we're going to go through to complete the zoning ordinance rewrite. And then finally emphasizing and specifying on the public involvement process that's associated with that, because public involvement is key and critical. So in terms of the scope, we're calling this a zoning ordinance rewrite. There's different terms we can use, but we feel like that's the most accurate description of what we're about here, which is taking the existing ordinance that was, again, inherited from Fulton County, that has been modified to appropriately and legally serve as the city's zoning ordinance, but that was not crafted specifically with the city of South Fulton in mind. So we're going to approach that document from the standpoint of rewriting it to become the zoning ordinance that the city of South Fulton needs to address the issues and opportunities that you have. That involves a lot of update, and involves, we believe very strongly, it involves streamlining the ordinance. As it currently exists, it's a large document, it probably has some internal inconsistencies. And again, this is just simply a result of years and years of modification and additions. So we expect that the outcome, one outcome of the process will be a document that's much more user-friendly to you, the selected officials making decisions based on the document that's your ordinance, much more user-friendly to staff as they will be working with it day in and day out, and we hope and intend very much more user-friendly to the property owners, developers, residents of the city, who rarely will sit down and read it front to back, but who will have to use it at different points in time. So it's a document that has to be designed with the user in mind, and you have experience in that respect. As I mentioned, customized to meet your needs, the city of South Fulton, as you are currently now constituted and organized, and your leadership and your structure is different very seriously than Fulton County was. So this ordinance needs to recognize you, the way you function, your districts, your citizens' visions and goals, needs to recognize your planning objectives, and needs to be coordinated with your current comprehensive plan and other, both completed actions, planning actions, and planning actions that are in process, like your economic development plan, which we think will run parallel to this. So we'll, as we go along, learning about your developing vision and coordinating revisions to the zoning ordinance to match that. The overlay districts are a critical part of your zoning ordinance, and we are learning more about the overlay districts as we're reading the document, as we're having some preliminary discussions about it. So we recognize very keenly that reviewing and making appropriate revisions to the overlay districts is an important part of the process, and we look forward to discussions with the various constituent groups that are, that help develop those overlay districts and that work with them on a regular basis to make sure that they're doing everything they need to do for the city and for the different communities where they're involved. One other thing to point out, a couple of things to point out from the scope standpoint, the zoning ordinance, as you're very well aware, but for the benefit of everyone, it's a tool. It's an ordinance, it's law, but it's a tool that's a part of your ongoing, call it city planning process, month in and month out, planning discussions, rezoning, variance requests, et cetera. Those are the regular occurring items. The zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, similar plans, we call them living documents. They are updated from time to time as they need to be in order to stay current. So we recognize that this is a part of an ongoing process that will be completed over the next year, and we'll talk about the schedule in a few minutes. But there have been efforts that preceded this, and then there will be other related planning efforts after this, and there'll be a time, sometime in the future, maybe sooner, maybe later, when the zoning ordinance will need to be updated again. So as we design the ordinance, we're going to design it to be friendly to that process, friendly to the need to be updated and modified in the future. That's an important factor. It very much needs to clearly communicate the city's expectations with regards to land use and development, in concert with the comprehensive plan. So as we engage in the public involvement process that Ms. Kennedy is going to describe, a lot of the questions that we'll be asking will be getting at the crux of the issues of development, of what is desired, and we recognize very keenly that that's different across different parts of the city. This is not a uniform city. We will be looking at the city as a whole, but you have a lot of variety across the city, so we recognize that, and we'll be striving to craft an ordinance that supports that and that facilitates different types of development in different parts of the city. And finally, we recognize that the ordinance is associated with, this ordinance is associated with different ordinances and different regulations and guidelines, and that what we may do with zoning rewrite can impact other ordinances that may need to be updated in the future. So we'll be having those discussions as well, and we'll look forward to hearing about other issues that may relate to the zoning ordinance even though they're not entirely within it. For example, your subdivision regulations, tree preservation ordinance, stormwater drainage designs, ordinances, guidelines, similar. Those are separate documents, but they're, they very much work in concert with the zoning ordinance. We recognize that as we go through the process. I'm going to ask Ms. Johnson to give you a break from my voice and talk a little bit about the process that we're going to go through. And for this, you can reference the schedule on the page that we have there.
Hello, my name is Anna Johnson, and I was not present at some of the meetings, the one-on-one meetings with the councilmembers, so it is nice to meet you here tonight. I'm going to give an overview of the process that is outlined on the left side of the schedule, and it's organized by task, and I'm going to go through in that order. So first and foremost, the project orientation and the public outreach process, as we've discussed, those are key to this project, and we know that the experts on the city are its citizens, and so we will look to you guys and to your constituents to get a better understanding of what the zoning issues are and what might need to be revised moving forward. So we're going to set up meetings and discussions to help understand local zoning issues. Specifically, we want to know how does the zoning ordinance function and how does it meet the local needs of the city? Function in terms of, is it easy to use? How is it organized? Is it organized in a way that's easy to understand, both for city staff and for residents that may be using it? We want to understand more about the issues and what regulations are working, what regulations are not working, what topics may be carried over from the Fulton County ordinance that may no longer be applied to the city of South Fulton, and what topics are perhaps missing from the document. We began at some initial diving into this analysis. We've held meetings with city staff, and we also toured the city. We've conducted listening sessions, the one-on-one sessions with the mayor and the councilmembers, and then tonight, here we are at the kickoff, and things are about to pick up, so we're getting excited. The upcoming, the next steps are to conduct issues identification meetings, and we will likely be doing those by district or grouping the districts to identify specific issues in different areas of the city. In addition, those will be followed by workshops to further discuss these issues and review key topics for public input, and then we will conclude with review meetings of our initial draft of the new document. And Inga will go into more detail about the public involvement process. So that takes care of task one and two. So moving on to task three is the technical analysis of the document, and this is where we're going into the existing document, which is the Fulton County zoning resolution, and we will start identifying issues and opportunities for content organization for the rewrite. And in order to further understand how the zoning ordinance functions and meets the needs of the city, we will be evaluating the zoning ordinance and the zoning map, and we will also utilize input on staff from their experience administering the zoning ordinance on a day-to-day basis. In terms of the function, we recommend that the document be organized in a sequence that mirrors the land development process. So the first question you might ask is, what can I do with my property? So how is it zoned and what are the appropriate land uses? Second, what standards guide how I can develop my property? Lot and building standards, overlay districts, parking signs, et cetera. So, and then the third, what are the procedures for developing my property? Procedures, permitting, and appeals process and enforcement. So we will try to organize the zoning rewrite that follows those land development steps. And ultimately, as you can see, one of the subtasks in task number three is the outline development and confirmation. So that's when we will reorganize the zoning ordinance and present it in an outline form first. So aside from modifying the zoning ordinance structure, we will also incorporate graphics such as tables and flow charts and condense the text to present it in a more easy to understand format. We will identify any inconsistent and overlapping or duplicated standards. In our initial diving in, we've already come across some of these duplicated standards in different areas, and we've seen areas that might be able to be consolidated or reorganized in a different way that will make more sense and be easier to use. We will also identify opportunities to streamline the ordinance. This could be consolidating zoning districts, and also evaluating the overlay districts is a big component of this. We were getting an understanding of what are the standards that are common to all of the overlay districts or multiple overlay districts, and are these standards that should also be applied citywide, or are some of the standards that are applied in the overlay districts, could those be applied to the city as well? So in addition to analyzing the overall function of the zoning ordinance, we will also evaluate how the zoning ordinance meets local needs. So we're going to be looking at what topics and zoning districts don't relate to the city that were taken from the county ordinance that may no longer be needed or no longer relevant, what topics are missing that need to be regulated. Some things that have come up already are Airbnb's and food trucks. Overlay, again, overlay districts, how can they best serve property owners and how can they be easier to administer? During our analysis, we will be consistent with state and federal face law and requirements, as well as current planning practices and trends. So moving down to task four, the drafting of the ordinance and the adoption. So the drafting of the document will follow, will come after the issues identification and technical analysis. The draft map will be created towards the end of our, so as you can see on the schedule, we'll be drafting the zoning ordinance development, and then the map will be created towards the end of that, once we have a better understanding of what changes we will see to the zoning districts. The presentation of proposed approaches to key issues may warrant public workshops for review and discussion, so as we go through this process, there may be topics that come up that need more attention, and we could schedule an additional public workshop at that time. Throughout this process, all changes will be tracked. This is very important. We're not just going to come in and reorganize the whole thing. We're going to show you exactly what has been changed, how it's been changed, what's been removed, what's been added, and if maybe something just moved to a different section, so we're going to keep track of all of that and present that article by article throughout the process so that we can all understand exactly what is being changed and track that throughout the process. Changes to the map will be similarly tracked. And the adoption process will be consistent with Georgia zoning law. The goal is to start reviewing the draft at the beginning of fall of this year, so this is a pretty aggressive schedule, and then the adoption process would follow that toward, to begin at the end of the year, as shown on the schedule. And that is all I have.
Do you have anything to add?
I was remiss when I started in not thanking Ms. Reed for the work that she and her department have done so far to help us get on board oriented. Very helpful, and we're excited to have the opportunity to work with them through this process. And you've all been patiently waiting here for Ms. Kennedy's picture.
Last but not least, thank you so much. I have spent a lot of time in this room on zoning issues, sometimes into the wee hours of the morning on the planning of old zoning board for Fulton County as we kind of tweak that zoning document that we have and that we're going to be rewriting. So I'm very familiar with the processes and the issues, and we are, I'm sure the public is equally eager to get started as we are. They are very passionate, as I know them, to be on some of the issues around zoning, and particularly around the, what we're doing with the overlay districts. So we're, we're looking forward to getting started. As, as Lee mentioned, we've spent a lot of time, or a good amount of time, with the staff and you on, on talking about how we engage the public, and we're putting together in short order that public involvement plan for your review. But as I always tell all of my clients, everybody is a part of the public involvement team, meaning that everyone has a role and can play a role in making sure that our outreach is broad and our outreach is inclusive. We want to make sure that it's inclusive to those who are very passionate about zoning, and we look forward to educating those who are not necessarily as knowledgeable as others are on zoning issues, but are nevertheless interested in what's happening in their communities and wanting to make sure that they play a role in the quality of life for their community. So we're going to be working with residents, we'll be working with the business community, making sure that they understand what the, what the implications are and what the rewrite involves for them, and our scope in terms of public involvement will be one that is interactive, one that is two-way, and one that is open 24 hours a day. So I've been around for a long time, and when I first started out in public involvement and planning, the only thing that we did for public engagement is have public meetings. And so if you weren't able to attend a public meeting at seven o'clock on a Tuesday night for a particular project, then you didn't have any input, and the process and the project was done without your input, and it was done with the input of those who were available. But public involvement and our tools have come a long way, so we don't have to rely longer on those who are able to just attend a public meeting. We have a lot of tools that are at our disposal, some that you all mentioned to us that you're going to help us with, and so we're grateful for that as well. But as a reminder, we want to make sure that, that you and the public understand that the input received and that we'll go out and get from the public will be used for the rewrite. Anna mentioned all of the ways or all of the information or the types of information that we'll be looking for. We'll use our methods and tools to document that and look for common themes for, from them in terms of where they'd like to go and where you'd like to go with the rewrite and with the zoning ordinance. So in addition to our face-to-face meetings, and we do want to have face-to-face opportunities with the public, because while our online tools are good, and we'll be using those, there's nothing like talking face-to-face and making sure that people understand the issues and the opportunities and where this process is going. So we'll have a series of meetings, and as, as Lee mentioned, we'll start out at the district level. We want to know what is happening and what is important for people in their districts, and so if you haven't already scheduled something for us to come out and, to your district through, I think Shayla is working with you to get that going, and we'll be roaming around your districts over the next several weeks, talking to the community about issues and opportunities relative to zoning. Also, if you're having above and beyond your district kind of town halls, if you're having events that are occurring in your neighborhoods or in your communities where you can set up a table and talk to people and get information, please let us know so that we can show up and attend as well. Those are less formal, but nevertheless still informational for the public as we go through the process. And then, as I mentioned, our, our outreach is going to be 24-hour. When I say 24-hour, we have these online tools that we're going to be using. First of all, we're starting with the tools that the city has, and you have a webpage, a website that we'll be creating a webpage for. We have, there is, there are several tools, the Twitter and Facebook and Instagram that we'll be posting information to so that the citizens are aware and can send information to us. We have created a dedicated email address where we will be communicating exclusively for this process with that email address so that everything comes into and goes out of that email address and helps us keep up with and compile information in an orderly fashion, and also so that we can share with you and the staff as, as we're going through. And we are also looking to use your mechanisms that you use to communicate with your constituents as well. And so when I say 24-hour, I mean if someone wants to, if you leave here and you wake up at one o'clock in the morning, you have a burning issue about zoning, and you want to send us something, then you can send us the information right away, and, and we'll get it. You don't have to wait until the morning, you don't have to wait until a phone call or sending us a hard copy letter, you can communicate with us right away. But we do want to make sure that we are clear that not everyone participates via online methods, and we are always going to have our face-to-face opportunities, and we're always going to have hard copy opportunities as we do tonight here with our comment forums. For anyone here who wants to make a comment, who wants to start providing us information right away, we're ready. And we're ready to go, we're ready to receive information. We know that there are members of the public who are very eager to get started and have specific issues that they'd like to share with us, and we're ready to take those in. What we'll be doing with the information again is that we will compile the input that we receive and align it with the technical aspects of the project and the tasks that Anna mentioned, and see how they align and where they align and where they work, where they don't work, to create the draft ordinance as we go through, and then we'll be doubling back with the community, explaining to them how we've used their information. A lot of times we take information and don't explain to the public how we use it. It's very important to explain to your constituents how we use their information or how we are not going to use the information, both ways. And so we'll be doubling back and making sure that their input is not only shared but indicated in terms of how we use their, their information. And then, at the end, we'll be looking for, not at the end, but along the way, we'll be looking for consensus. What is rising to the top in terms of common themes and issues that... What is rising to the top in terms of common themes and issues that people are concerned about? We talked about the, or Lee talked about the overlay districts. And I'm very familiar with the overlay districts had a hand in creating some of them and helping to approve others. Some of them are very different, but some of them have some things that are very common. So, we'll be looking for common issues, not only from the general zoning ordinance issues, but also from the, from other, from the overlay. And then, also, as Anna and Lee mentioned, we are always dealing, we, meaning the community, is always, we're always dealing with new issues. There are things that continue to arise in our community that haven't, that we haven't had to deal with before. Somebody used the example of the Airbnb. That's a new phenomenon for us to deal with or for you to deal with, and we have to look at how that is used. We've talked about with you independently and individually about some of the issues that are coming forward that will be affecting the residents and businesses of South Fulton. So, we'll be looking at some of these new issues as well and looking forward to working with you on the process. But most importantly, looking forward to working with your public, with your constituents. And I think they're eager to get started, and we're ready to hit the ground running now as we have kicked off this process. And Lee, I'll turn it back over to you, and then we'll take questions and answers. As I mentioned, we do have our comment forum for anyone with the public who wants to make a comment or if you'd like to take some with you, and our email will be ready and open for business here in the next day or so. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the email address that Enger referred to is actually
Yes.
On the back of the schedule you have at the bottom, COSFZoningrewrite@bbqatl.com.
Yes. Over the 24 hours, seven days.
And we appreciate your time and attention, and we'd be glad to answer any questions or entertain discussion.
Thank you all so much. Very informative on the process. At this time, I, Mr. Lee, I'm, I'm, thank you for everything. I'm most interested in this task four, the drafting, the zoning ordinance development and the zoning map modification.
Yes, sir.
Is the zoning ordinance, is this where, if we have a new classification or we want to change what's allowed in a particular classification, is that, would that be addressed in this?
Exactly.
And then, if there are the zoning map modifications, if we want to rezone parcels, would we do that here or is there a space in the process to do that?
Typically, that would need a separate process. You're very familiar, I know, with rezonings and the normal process for that. Resonings are very strictly governed by the Georgia zoning procedures law, and you have to follow the prescribed process, whether it's a property owner-initiated rezoning or a city-initiated rezoning, which rarely happens, but that is possible. So, what we're talking about here in terms of zoning map modifications is not rezoning of individual properties. It's a update or reorganization of the map so that it's consistent with the revised zoning text. But the intent is not to change zoning for individual-specific properties. If that's necessary, that would need to be follow-up activity following the proper process.
All right. And then, my last question, so we, I see, this is kind of a common air question just for all of us. I see the, this calendar extends to December.
Yes, sir.
So, we are not really going to have a new zoning code until 2020. Is that, is that what I'm doing?
Our projection is that we can complete the process and the adoption of the new code so that it can become effective in 2020. There's variables during the course of the process, and Ms. Kennedy went into detail about public involvement process. We have been through zoning processes where issues arose that needed to be addressed properly before the ordinance could be completed, and that extended the process.
And so, this is, this is the quandary for me.
Yes, sir.
When we became a city, actually, before we were even sworn in, a former employee, after we, after we voted for city, a former employee notified everyone with applications that we had become a city. And then, there was a rush of applications because people were afraid that we might change the zoning or we might do a moratorium. So, there was a rush of applications for people just trying to get their paperwork in in case they wanted to start building with the current zoning place. We have since then had several moratoriums, and we have moratoriums now. It does not seem feasible for us to extend, I'll just speak for myself, it does not seem feasible for me to extend a moratorium for all of 2019. And, and I am, I'm open to feedback from anyone on this board or any of the professionals there. How do we, when the word gets out that we're going to be doing this rezoning, there are going to be people who want to rush and get their stuff thrown up under the old code because they know that the new code is probably going to be more stringent. So, how do we deal with that?
No. I think another way we can do that, Mr. Kennedy, and I said before, is those things are really important in terms of development of your district or whatever. You have to identify though, a overall moratorium is bad, but you have to identify the fact that you may not want to own warehouses in your district for the next year, but let the other families have an opportunity to go through, and I think that's one we're going to be getting addressed.
How do we, I'm sorry, just to follow up, how do we, because we can't, no preference board system.
Yeah, we have, we've done that, you know, we have said, you know, no warehouses, that's where we are until such and such time, but you have the opportunity to do that. County.
All that I would like to contribute is that working with your legal counsel on the questions of moratorium is the appropriate course of action.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Willis?
Thank you for, yes, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. How are the community charrette or focus groups?
Ms. Willis, I heard part of your question, part of it was, could you repeat?
Yes, I, question is, soon will we start the charrettes or focus groups with?
How soon will we start? Right. We are expecting this month and January to start participating in meetings around the community. Some of those have already been scheduled. We're looking, as Ms. Kennedy said, to dovetail with meetings that are already being organized to the extent possible. And we always do that. People have busy schedules, there's enough meetings out there. We don't want to introduce a whole new series of meetings and expect people to come to those in addition to everything else. So, at the start, we're looking for meetings that are already scheduled that we can join in on and assist, and we've been invited to some already, and we're expecting more. So, that's starting this month, and then it will continue beyond that.
Right. Can I add something? Councilwoman Willis, so just to add to that, there have been at least three different invites in the last week that we've received that we're planning to attend and give an invite or kind of a kickoff announcement. We have, I believe, District One, Two, and Three have given us announcements of meetings that are being held. So, it's kind of already starting by piggybacking off of meetings that you already have.
Right. So, the meeting that I'm having in District Three is, is going to be of a department head, and so, I guess I am trying to figure out if we need to try to schedule a meeting specific to the zoning process.
From my understanding, the upcoming meeting with respect to department heads, Ms. Reed is looking for the focus for planning and community development to be on zoning, is that correct?
Right, correct. So, just to give you an idea, we're speaking highly on zoning and what's coming up. I'm just pretty much giving an idea of what we're doing, just in an announce, some of the things that are in the hopper now. But we will have meetings that are more so geared just towards this project. So, this week or these meetings, we received just an announcement to the public. It's not going to have charrettes and actual activities taking place, no. So, those will come.
Ms. Willis, can I add to that?
Okay.
I know, that kind of got me when you said piggyback. This process is truly very important
Right.
To all of us. And I don't think it's the kind of thing that we can piggyback on something else. And then, we have to make sure that we're handling the expectations of those people that come here. Because, you know, if they come out here and you're doing something, and you piggyback on something else and you're not giving the full thing, they may be a little bit disappointed that they didn't hear what all they wanted to hear. So, I would suggest that if we're going to do, if we're going to do these things, that we do more than just piggyback on some other thing or town hall.
So, maybe that was misunderstood or misstated. I mentioned the announcement being made at these meetings. They will have their own individual meetings.
Okay. Right, right. And I think I was really referring to, if you look at the public outreach section of the schedule, the first district participation, initial issues discussions, that's what we're looking at over the next couple of months, and we're already aligned with some meetings that are already being scheduled. The real meat of the focused public involvement is what we're calling targeted public workshops. Those will take place in the approximately May through July timeframe, and those will be specific scheduled meetings for this purpose only, to go in depth. And then, finally, in the early fall, there'll be review meetings to allow for direct feedback on zoning proposals at that time, and those also will be purpose-specific.
Ms. Willis, you still have a queue. Thank you for ladies. And then, let me reiterate that we're not just taking input through meetings. And so, we know that there are people out there already who have very detailed or who have issues that they'd like to deal with, that they're eager to provide feedback to us, and we're ready to receive that. So, we don't, while we are going to be working in concert with district meetings and other events and our own meetings, we don't have to wait for a meeting to receive feedback from the community. There are people who are eager to give us input, and we're, and we're ready to receive it. So, it's not only just about meetings in terms of receiving input, and we want to make sure that your constituents know that, that it's not just about attending a meeting and that will be the only way that you are able to give us information. There are people out there who know the zoning ordinance better than I do, and so, and your constituents, and they're ready to give us feedback. So, we're able to take that.
Ms. Willis, you still have a queue. She does?
She's still there.
As a matter of fact
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
We're ready to take information now. We have comment forums that we are able to provide tonight, and I, if you all don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and pass those out so folks can start writing their information down.
Thank you all so much. It's been very informative, and we're eager to get the floor. And I think, Mr. Kennedy, you made a very good point, and I'm delighted that people always look forward to that.
One other thing I want to emphasize
That's not my speech.
That is important and that I want you to know and that the public here to know is that we're developing a database, a contact database. We have a lot of it already, but we are using a lot of different methods to get information out. So, I have a sign-in sheet tonight too as well. And some people prefer paper, some people prefer the email. We're going to use it all to get information out to the public.
As I was saying, Mr. Kennedy, the duplos are there, but I think we all knew from the beginning that this process was going to be elementary for us, you know, and so, we have to take those, those are two good questions, and we have to take those in perspective and, and make sure that, you know, those people who move on those kinds of business, if you want to write to a restaurant in your, in your district, you want to make sure that that, that can get in there.
All right. But once again, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. At this time, I entertain a motion for executive session. That's your.
Before this dinner, before this dinner, we could just I'd like to make a motion that we have an executive session for a legal, legal state in personal.
Second.
Any objection that passes? Any objection? Any objection that passes?
Can someone please call me from executive session?